The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order the January 8 quasi judicial meeting of the Cary Town Council and at this time I'd ask that you join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the nine states of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're at item 1.2, adoption of our agenda. At the request of staff, we have a suggested change for item 2.3, Phillips Place Town Home. This item will not be heard at tonight's meeting but will be presented at the council's February 3, 2015, meeting at 6:30. Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
It's a move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our first quasi judicial public hearing is for Union Bank at Bradford. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda. All speakers who would like to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is on my right. We'll pause just a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at the public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And I'm going to pause from saying anything or doing anything until that has been completed.
Jack and I have run the agenda up to December 11.
We have December 11.
Yes.
Let's do that one.
What?
We have December 11.
Well, you can get to it by Town of Cary, right? Oh. Get to a web browser. And now say www.townofcary.org. There it is. Select that. Okay. Yeah, just click that. Go right to it. Under Town Council. Agendas and Meetings. Yep. Yeah, I mean, yeah. And then it says quasi judicial right there. There you go. Okay, at this time, I'll ask if any council member has had any site visits, ex parte communications, financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my left with Mr. Yarha, I'm moving to the right. Mr. Yarha.
I have not, sir.
I have not?
No.
I have not? All right, very good. Based on the disclosures we've heard from the council members, I'll invite anyone to the podium at this time who has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing none, I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing and recognize Mr. Hales of our staff who will introduce the hearing.
Thank you, council. As you indicated, the first item on tonight's agenda is a request by Union Bank for development of an out parcel approximately one acre in size at the Bradford Development at the intersection of Davis Drive and High House Road. Both adjacent roads, Davis Drive and High House Road, are identified as major thoroughfares in the town's comprehensive transportation plan. There is a future C-Trans fixed route planned for Davis Drive running north from High House. I do not have specifics on when that is planned in the capital improvement budget. There's an existing route along the frontage of the site, the overall Bradford site along High House Road. Parks, Recreation, Cultural Resources Facilities Master Plan does not identify any improvements necessary along this project's frontage, however, it's important to note or interesting to note there's a multi-use trail or street-side trail running along the opposite side of Davis Drive, north-south. As mentioned earlier, this is the overall Bradford Development, the mixed-use sketch plan which was approved back in '06-'07 timeframe, and tonight's hearing is in regard to out parcel one which is located right here at the signalized interest off of Davis Drive. Existing conditions in our aerial photography is dated since March 2013, so it's a little, it's been developed slightly more than this aerial photo shows. The site has been cleared. There are townhomes now under construction immediately to the north, and the apartment building has progressed and is occupied across the street to the east. The applicant's plan includes an 8,600 square foot bank located toward the intersection of Bradford Green Square and Davis Drive. There's a single drive-through lane that wraps around between Davis Drive and the proposed building, and then between the building and Bradford Green Square, accessing three lanes of drive-through and a bypass lane on the internal side of the building. Parking is located to the north of that. There are two pedestrian accesses that run across the site, providing pedestrian access between Bradford View Drive and Davis Drive. Stormwater is being handled through regional devices planned with the overall Bradford Development, not onsite. Architecturally, the building is very similar to the buildings which were just constructed with Phase II of Bradford, light-colored brick and cultured stone with some tan earth-toned ephes and bronze accents, ornamental brackets on the tower elements to kind of tie the buildings together with the new non-residential buildings and the apartment buildings themselves. These are the internal facades facing the two internal private streets, the back of the bank obviously and the drive-through facade. That concludes staff's presentation. At this time, we're going to turn over the applicant and the staff will be back to provide some professional observations following their presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call on the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Mayor Weinberg, members of the council, Mr. Silverstein. My name is Bob Brady, attorney for Union Bank here, applicant for the approval tonight. I have several persons with me here tonight. I don't intend to call each and every one of them to testify, but I would like to let the council know that if you have questions that deal with their particular areas, David Adams is the city market executive for Union Bank here for the applicant, Loftie Smith, an engineer, and Tucker McKenzie, an engineering and surveying intern with Withers and Ravenel is here, he will be testifying, that is Loftie Smith. Mike Horn, engineer with Kimley Horn here to testify, and Stephen Baxter, the architect of this facility. He is a principal with Baxter Armistead Architecture located in Wake Forest, North Carolina. Having said that, as you know and as evidenced by the staff report, I am here to support or to prove that the application, contend that the application is sufficient for approval by this town council, and in furtherance of that, I would ask that Loftie Smith come to the podium to testify.
My name is Loftie Smith. I work for Withers and Ravenel. We provided the land planning, landscape architecture, and civil engineering design for the site. I have, in my 29th year practicing as a civil engineer in North Carolina, and I consider my area of expertise to be in land development and land planning as it relates to civil engineering and land design. As I know you have our statement of qualifications regarding the approval criteria, and I think Mr. Hales did a good job of explaining the project, I'm going to jump directly to the approval criteria one by one. We believe that the design before you meets the applicable standards of the LDO, in particular chapters seven and eight and the town standard specifications. We are not aware of any need for any averances or waivers, nor are we asking for any. Regarding the second criteria for adequate protection for other properties or no adverse impact to other properties, we meet all the town's requirements for setbacks and landscaping buffers. We have proper, hopefully have proper screening of the drive-through, of the vehicular use areas, and in particular between the project and the townhomes to the north to provide adequate screening for separation of those uses. Regarding the third criteria for harmony and unity with the development, this one's fairly easy. I think that a bank is an excellent transitional use between the residential townhomes to the north and the retail uses to the south. I can think of no better use for this site. I'd certainly rather not be before you presenting a fast food here. Regarding the fourth criteria, safe conditions for pedestrians or motorists, we have only one access into the site. It is from the internal roadway system. We have no direct motorist access or vehicular access to Davis Drive, which I believe is a safer configuration. Regarding pedestrian access, we do have direct access to the sidewalk system within Davis Drive as well as the internal sidewalk circulation system. There are ample interior crosswalks for safe passage of pedestrians within the site wanting to go to the other out parcels or retail uses or the mixed-use residential buildings. The fifth criteria regarding safe ingress and ingress for emergency vehicles, to the best of our knowledge, all of the public accesses and internal accesses as well as our proposed driveway and site meet the town design standards for vehicular and service vehicle use. Therefore, we believe that there is safe access to and within the site. And that concludes my portion of the approval criteria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. The applicant would now call Mike Horn with Kimley Horn to testify.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Horn. I'm with Kimley Horn and Associates, a licensed engineer here in the state of North Carolina, having practiced traffic engineering for over 30 years. I have reviewed the plan submitted for the Union Bank. I have also reviewed TAR 231A for the Bradford Development and the recommended improvements in that study. Bradford has completed all of the recommended improvements required by the town and is in the process of developing the site. The Union Bank site at Bradford is a 4,321 square foot bank with drive-through windows on the first floor and 4,321 square feet of office space on the second floor. We conducted peak hour turning movement counts at the signalized intersection of Bradford Green Square, Valleystone Drive, and Davis Drive, and this intersection is currently operating at an acceptable level of service during the peak hours. With the addition of the traffic from the Union Bank development, this intersection will continue to operate at an acceptable level of service during the peak hours. Based upon this information, it is my professional opinion that the roadway improvements constructed for the Bradford development mitigate the traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the Union Bank development. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Horn. I would respectfully tender both my witnesses as experts in their chosen fields. That concludes the evidence of the applicant. However, I would also offer and ask that the council take judicial notice of the staff report, of the land development ordinance, and all the attachments there, too. It is our position, then, that the applicant has satisfied the sixth criteria that warrant approval of the site plan as sought. I would ask that the site plan be approved unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'll invite other speakers who have been sworn in if they would like to speak in support of the application. If so, I'd invite them to approach the podium one at a time. Seeing none, we'll move on. Any cross-examination of witnesses who have testified in support of the request will move on. Now I'll open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request, and I would invite the first speaker forward. Call on town staff for any testimony they wish to add.
Thank you. This one's a little unusual in that there are no minor modifications being requested, so I'll just generally offer some professional observations in regards to the other approval criteria for site plans. The plan is consistent with the Bradford mixed-use sketch plan which was approved by council in 2007. That plan did have some restrictions in regards to drive-throughs as you may or may not remember. It establishes minimum and maximum square footages. The drive-throughs are limited to no more than three, only two of which being restaurant uses. This would be the first of the drive-through out parcels approved at Bradford and is obviously a non-restaurant use, therefore there'd be two more allowed in the future. The overall development has been developing lower than the anticipated maximum square footages in the mixed-use sketch plan. There's actually a minimum commercial square footage of 100,000 square feet and a minimum office square footage of 7,500. If this plan were approved and taking into account everything else currently under development, the development numbers would stand at approximately 85,000 square feet of commercial floor space, and this would be the first 4,300 square foot of office. The plan's consistent with the buffering, the 30-foot streetscape along Davis Drive for the non-residential parcels. Internal streetscapes are not required per the Bradford MUSP. However, there are evergreen shrubs and trees to screen the parking in the building from the adjacent uses and from the adjacent roadways. Access is lined with the parking lot across the street and, as mentioned by myself and the applicant's team, ample pedestrian connectivity has been provided throughout the site. And again, no minor modifications. This is really only before you because of the fact it is proposing a new drive-through and per the new traffic considerations in the land development ordinance, new drive-throughs are required to come to council for approval. That concludes staff's presentation at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brady, is there any necessary cross-examination?
Nothing further.
Okay. We now ask if anyone's been sworn in, if they have any objection to the competency of any evidence or testimony. Does either party or any party believe that what has been presented tonight warrants a continuance of this hearing? Okay? Now's the time for the council to deliberate, and I open it up to council members for comments or questions. I'll start, I have one. And it might require Mr. Horn to come back. Mr. Horn stated that without the development, that the traffic signals was at a satisfactory or acceptable level, and then with the development, it was also at an acceptable level. My question is, did the non-build include the current development at Bradford in those measurements or projections? Or, I hope I made that clear.
When I said we made a recent count, we made a current count in January of this year of the existing traffic. So we made a, wanted to find out what was in place at that time, particularly the publics. What I will tell you is that the intersection there at Davis Drive is operating at a level of service A in the morning and a B level of service in the afternoon. So it's an A in the morning, B in the afternoon, and then with the traffic then associated with the bank added on top of that, it remains a level of service A in the morning and B in the afternoon.
That's good information. I was more concerned about the residential developments that are ongoing. Was that projected into any measurements?
No further residential, other than understand that the traffic that is for the ones that are occupied, they clearly were included in the current count. We also have construction traffic that's going on through there for the ones that are doing it. But quite honestly, with the level of service, there is more than sufficient capacity to accommodate this.
And I tend to agree when you're talking about As and Bs.
Yeah, I have a question for you. What percentage, do you know what percentage of those apartments are occupied at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay.
Other questions?
The only question I had was, I'm sorry, was with respect to the second-story office. With respect to this plan, is there enough parking for, because this is the first time I've seen a two-story drive-through in a while. So the second story has offices, is that correct?
Correct. It's similar to the Cardinal Bank at the intersection or Preston Corners. The southeastern quadrant has a two-story bank. Second story is office and the first is.
So that's why we see the extra parking on the north side that's needed for this?
That is why you see more parking than would typically be associated with just a bank, because it is a two-story building and it will be an office use yet undetermined.
Okay.
On the second floor.
I guess Mr. Horn pretty much answered my question. I was concerned about the timing of the traffic study also, because in the staff report it mentioned 2007 was when the traffic study was performed. That's for Bradford as a whole, I assume.
Correct. The original traffic study studied the 200,000 square feet of commercial and the maximum of, I forgot the number now, the larger numbers of office and commercial, which we haven't seen that build out to its full potential yet. So it studied more even though it's an older study, but we did not have new data.
That was 2007, but Mr. Horn just did a January study for this project itself which came up with the As and Bs. I just wanted to make sure that the study that he was referring to in his original comments was recent as opposed to old. As far as the 2007, what's the shelf life on those things? Does it go by development? Was that part of the PDD or do they have?
It has built out years that are anticipated in the study itself, and there is also a timeframe. The plant, the original TIA was expired due to the time that it passed, which is why we brought it up in the staff report.
Ah-ha. So the shelf life is off the shelf.
Correct. It's somewhere in the neighborhood of three or four years. I don't have the specific number on me.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? If not, I'll move on to the public. No, I'll move on to the, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and ask Mr. Hales to help us with any motions necessary. Is anyone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. For the reasons discussed and articulated by our staff, I move that we approve the proposed site plan with the conditions stated below, as it meets all of the approval criteria set forth in section 3.9.2i of the LDO. The approval is conditioned upon the following. The applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining development review committee comments on the master plan set submitted for signature.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Any additional business? Okay, we'll close this public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Hales.
Thank you.
Our next and final quasi judicial public hearing is for Crown at Cary Park Apartments. An overview of the hearing procedures and detailed rules are attached to the printed agenda, and all speakers who want to speak during this public hearing must be administered an oath by Mrs. Johnson, who is seated to my right. And we'll pause a moment to allow those individuals who would like to speak at this public hearing to approach Mrs. Johnson and receive their oaths. And at this time, council will pause from any further action until that has been completed. Notice I didn't say not do anything, so I can drink my drink. financial relationships, specialized knowledge, or close relationship to an affected person to disclose, starting on my right, Ms. Robinson. I was actually looking for Ms. Ann Cox.
She's not here. Yeah, there's nothing.
I've had nothing.
No.
Okay, very good. Based on the disclosures we've heard from the council members, I'd invite anyone to the podium who has been sworn in to speak if you have an objection to a council member's participation in this hearing. Seeing none, we'll proceed. I'll open the quasi judicial public hearing. Mr. Grattis, our staff will introduce this hearing.
Good evening, council. Case before us this evening is Chronic Cary Park Apartments. It is 13 SP 057. It is located at the southeast corner of approximately Cary Glen Boulevard and Carpenter Fire Station Road on approximately 9.39 acres. As you can see, this site is located within the Cary Park PDD and is surrounded by additional and adjoining residential development. The Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Facilities Master Plan calls for some greenway trails within the vicinity of the area, but there are none that pass through the site. And I'd also like to note that a champion tree survey was performed on site, and there are no champion trees located on the site. There are also no stream buffers or floodways on the site. Again, is heavily wooded, but no champion trees were located on site. To the south is the Glencroft Town Homes Project that was approved recently, and then there were some changes, minor changes to the site plan that were approved over the summer. I'd also like to note, to the east, there is a Duke Energy Progress Substation. For you is a colored site plan that shows that there are currently three buildings proposed for the site with a total of 197 units. I'd also like to note that in the northeast corner of the site, there is a parking structure, and I will go over the details of the parking located in that structure later this evening. I'd also like to note that there are two BMPs, one located in the southeast corner and one is located in the southwest corner. There are also some amenity areas located on site. There is a plaza between the two residential buildings that are located in the southern side of the site, and also there is a pool amenity area located adjacent to the building that is located in the southwestern portion of the site. The applicant is requesting five modifications to the site. A, we'll deal with a traffic signal. B, we'll deal with parking provided for the site. C, which is located on both BMPs, we'll deal with retaining walls at those BMPs. E and D, deal with access along the eastern portion of the site and also deal with access to the eastern site itself. First modification would be a payment in lieu for a traffic signal. They were requesting a payment in lieu in the amount of $73,333.33 to signalize the intersection at Carpenter Fire Station Road and Cary. intersection at Carpenter Fire Station Road and Cary Glen Boulevard. There have been previous applicants in the past that have also provided payment in loos and with the intent that this is the fourth and final payment in lieu to be able to go ahead and signalize that intersection. B is a parking reduction. Under current ordinance between resident parking and visitor parking, there will be a required 455 spaces. I'd also like to note that the applicant has provided structured parking. That structured parking on the ground level and then the second level, it is only able to have two stories, or excuse me, is only providing two stories, will provide parking for 28 spaces or a total of 6% of the parking. Proposed by the applicant, they have proposed 412 spaces, which is a reduction of 43 spaces or a reduction of 9.5% in the amount of parking that would be provided for the site. There are also ample service parking lots assorted throughout the development with accessibility to each of the different buildings. The third modification are retaining walls and stormwater devices. BMP one, which is the larger BMP and is located adjacent to the road that is along the western portion of the site, will have three retaining walls. There will be one 10-foot wall, a 6-foot wall, and a 5-foot wall. The 6-foot wall and the 5-foot wall will be screened appropriately per LDO requirements. The 10-foot wall is proposed not to be screened, but I would like to note that the road Cary Glen Boulevard, which is the access point to the site, the way that the elevation works out in this site, that 10-foot wall would be below the elevation of Cary Glen. So presumably, wall would be below the elevation of any drivers. So the most visible walls, the 5-foot wall and the 6-foot wall, would be the ones that would be visible, and they are screened. BMP two is at the southeast corner of the site. As you can see, the walls would be along the northern and western portion of the site and would be facing away from any visitors, any pedestrians on the site. So visibility on those walls would be limited to the eastern portion of the site and the southern portion of the site, both of which are screened per LDO requirements. Modification D would be vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to the east. The applicant has provided and was required to provide connectivity to the north, connectivity to the west, and connectivity to the south, but they have not provided connectivity to the east. Again, I would like to note that to the east is a Duke Energy Progress Substation. So the possibility for redevelopment on that site may be limited. And additionally, it may be redundant to provide additional connections to the east, given that connections for that site, if it were to be developed, would most likely come from the north, and also noting that it is up against NC 540. Modification E, which is the fifth and final modification being requested, is in addition to providing sidewalks on one side of a street, because we are in a mixed-use center, they are required to provide pedestrian connections on both sides of all streets. And as you can see in the corner of the drawing, up in the northeast corner of the site that is shown on the presentation, that would be the connection to the northern site. So what they would do is go south. When they hit the residential building, they would go ahead and make a left and make another right, continue to the Glencroft Town Home site. The reason they are not providing sidewalk along the eastern side of that road is that pedestrian connectivity is provided along the western side, and I will leave the applicant to discuss and explain why they believe connectivity for pedestrians along the eastern portion of that site should be limited. It is now the time in our presentation where the applicant is able to make their presentation. Staff will be more than happy to answer additional questions and will also provide a summeration of the modification requests. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll call in the applicant's attorney to present arguments and evidence in support of the application by addressing the applicable approval criteria.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilman, my name is Tom Worth Jr., attorney from Raleigh, PO Box 1799 Raleigh, 27602. In the interest of trying to move forward briskly, I hand over to the clerk a list of our prospective exhibits. Mr. Grattis has a copy, so he's apprised of that. Basically, what we have is a site that is the subject of a PDE approved by the town in March of 2006. Our clients, the Crown Cary Park Limited Partnership, acquired this property in December of 2012. The MR8, which is permitted by the PDD, to be developed with 235 units, as you know now, is requested to be developed for 197 units. 235 prospective, but 197 are requested. I'll be calling as witnesses as many as four people, and those people include Mr. John Callahan. And John, if you'll come up, come around, please.
Those are yours.
Mr. John Callahan. John, you are the PE and you're the president of John A. Edwards &amp; Company?
That's correct.
And tell us briefly what your educational background is on a professional level.
I have a BS degree in civil engineering and I've been licensed since 1996, 18 years. I've been working in the field for 22 years.
I will tender, Mr. Callahan, as a, an expert. You have been involved with this site plan, I think, since 2013, is that correct?
It's 2012.
2012, okay. Is this a proper rendition, a rendition of your site plan?
It is.
Okay. And this is the colored site plan that we have provided as part of our presentation? That would be our exhibit K. Is that correct?
Correct.
In connection with this site plan, you have presented this plan to the Architecture Review Committee of the Cary Park Property Owners Association, is that correct?
We have.
And you made presentations to this group on how many occasions?
Two.
And the most recent was when, please?
June 8th, I think it was, of 2014.
I'd like to hand up. Here's the original and copies for the council. I hand to you a letter dated August 8, 2014, that indicates a meeting took place on June 5 of 2014.
That's correct.
And did you receive this letter?
Yes.
And the essence of the letter is what?
That the Cary Park Architectural Control Committee had no objection to our development.
Okay. And this was as a result of the, the second meeting. Did you share the site plan that is now before us?
We did.
With the group?
We did.
Okay. Moving right to the first criteria of the LDO, I ask you if in your opinion, the site plan as presented tonight complies with all the applicable requirements of the LDO?
It does, subject to the approval of minor modifications.
Subject to the approval of the minor modifications, the five minor modifications that Mr. Grattis has, has laid out for us. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. In connection with the minor modification number A, the payment in lieu, has our client agreed to make that payment?
They have.
Okay. And I'll ask you one other question, and then I'm going to ask Krista Green, our transportation expert, to come forward. At this time, did that site plan reflect accurately all of the turning radii that would be necessary internal to the project for rescue vehicles, emergency vehicles, that type of thing?
Yes.
So that is, that was done in conjunction with the approvals before the town staff. Okay. If you would step down and, Krista Green, come around. Okay. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Krista Green. I work for StanTech Consulting at 801 Jones Franklin Road in Raleigh, 27606. I'm the Senior Traffic Engineer. With 24 years of experience, I've been a registered PE since 1995, so for 20 years now.
Okay. Have you reviewed the traffic report in this case, 13 TAR 363?
Yes, I have.
And have you reviewed the site plan that is before us, 13 SP 057?
Yes, I have.
And would you please indicate your professional opinion in connection with, I'm now looking, ladies and gentlemen, at Development Plan Criteria Number One, which encompasses also seven, eight, and nine, which are criteria in four, five, and six of the six criteria that must be approved for a site plan. Pertaining to, do you believe that the plan provides safe movements for pedestrians or motorists and prevents a dangerous arrangement of pedestrian and vehicular ways?
Yes, the, the plan does provide that.
Okay. Do you believe professionally that the plan provides safe ingress and egress for emergency services to the site?
Yes, it does.
And do you believe that the plan provides mitigation for traffic congestion impacts reasonably expected to be generated by the project?
Yes.
So those are your professional opinions in connection with these criteria, speaking also to, in conjunction with minor modification A.
Yes, they are.
And you are quite aware that we have committed, our client's permitted to, to cooperate financially in the, in the traffic signal installation?
Yes.
Okay. If you will step down now, but I'm going to call you briefly in just a moment, please. I'd like to move to minor modification B. This is the 9.5% reduction in the required parking. And I'll ask you, as a, as the engineer, is it your opinion professionally that the reduction in the parking numbers will improve the visual impact of the project?
That is my opinion, yes.
And do you have an opinion as to the reduction, the requested reduction in the impervious surface reduction?
The requested reduction will reduce impervious and environmental impacts to the site, also opens up area for additional screening and landscaping.
Okay. Thank you. And if you'll step down at this time, I'd like to call, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Alan Engel. Mr. Engel is a principal in this owning entity, this limited partnership. Mr. Engel, will you share with the mayor and council your background specifically in connection with the development of apartment projects?
My name is Alan Engel. I am a principal in this development with the general partnership of this development. I live in Birmingham, Alabama. We have, my company, our company has been developing property for almost 30 years. We've developed around 9,500 units, one way or another currently owned and are developing 5,000 to 5,500 units. We have owned property in North Carolina now for 17, 18 years, almost 1,600 units in the triad area.
And based on your experience, not only in North Carolina, but with the apartment projects with which you have been involved, what has been your experience as far as the parking needs? And feel free to refer to any information you may have that you generated yourself.
So in general, we typically want to have one space per bedroom, two, two units, two parking spaces per unit. We decided to look and see how this might compare to the units we have over in Greensboro, High Point, Winston-Salem. And you might be interested to know that in six properties in the triad area, we have an average of 2.06 spaces per unit and 1.16 spaces per bedroom. Here, we're at 2.09 spaces per unit and 1.2 spaces per bedroom. I can tell you that at those six properties over in the triad, we have not had any problems with, with the current parking, and it is more than sufficient.
And are you aware of how we are proposing to handle our handicap spaces in this project?
Yes, sir. We have, I think, let's see, we have required with 12, required 10, we have 16. And we, we've actually added some handicap spaces because, frankly, because of the elevation and the way it's, it's spread out, we want to be sure that the handicap accessibility and spaces are in the appropriate places. And the slope has something to do with it. So we, we have added handicap spaces, which will reduce your total number of regular parking spaces.
Do, in your experience, do you feel like that the, you've got sufficient, you'll have sufficient numbers in the proposal with this minor modification for visitor spaces, based on your previous experience in your other projects?
Yes. I mean, the, the numbers that I gave you earlier contemplate visitor spaces, and we have just, just not had any problems with that. The, the unit mix that we have in this property is roughly the same as the unit mixes in the other properties, and it, it works. And we have plenty, a couple of the properties are college properties with a lot of visitors, and we, we just don't have a problem that the numbers work.
Okay. Thank you. If you'll step down, please. Ms. Green, may I ask you to come back briefly on this particular minor modification B? And I apologize to musical chairs, to everybody. Have you had occasion to examine the Urban Land Institute requirements or recommendations in connection with a project like this?
Yes. When looking at what the Urban Land Institute recommends, they don't do it by bedroom, they do it by unit. And with it being 1.1 space per unit with 1.5 spaces for guests per unit, you would need a total of 326 spaces based on this criteria.
326?
Yes, sir.
Based on their criteria? Okay. As opposed to what we proposed, the 412?
412, yes.
Okay. I have no further questions on that particular subject. Okay. Moving on to minor modification C, and with our site plan up above, I ask that Mr. Callahan return to the lectern. Mr. Callahan, would you explain briefly in lay terms for me the topographic situation, north and south, and east and west on this property, please?
Yes, we have quite a bit of natural topography on the site. From north to south is approximately 40 feet. East to west, there is also quite a bit of fall, but it evens out as it goes across the middle of the site. So there are, these are making use of split-level buildings with five stories on, facing the main street on Building One, four stories on Buildings Two and Three facing that main street, and it steps down again. So it's kind of a terraced site plan.
You, you talked in terms of Buildings One, Two, and Three.
I'm sorry.
Explain that again to us.
They're not reflected up there. I want him to, to go.
Building One is, is the building on the north side, Two is the one with the pool attachment, and Three is the smaller of the three buildings.
So facing the north, it's how many stories in Building One?
Building One on the north side is four stories, and then it's five as it faces the internal street. And then a four-story, again, facing, oh, that's great, thank you, Kevin. This side here would, would be four-story and then five on the bottom.
Oh, so it's, it's kind of falling in.
Everything is, is falling, yes. This is an upper level, it terraces down a floor, comes straight across, and then terraces down another floor.
I'm sorry, so it's five stories on the south side?
This would be five stories, correct. And four facing the street on, on the north side of these two buildings.
The elevations. Thank you. That's great.
There we have the typical four-story elevation. There we have the typical four-story elevation, and then you can kind of see the, the terrace level, side elevation. And there's the five-story elevation.
Now, focusing on the retaining wall, the hardscape transitions, please share with us the approach that has been taken in the planning process with BMP one, which is there in proximity to the Cary Glen Boulevard.
Okay. With the massive amount of transition grade from the north to the south, it becomes very challenging to grade a site and also to make the best use of the site and, and best use of space. There were also some PUD or PDD transitional yard standards all the way around three sides of the property as we were kind of on the exterior of the PDD. So there are 30-foot yards all the way around the property. So with that, trying to work with the, the grades, we ended up with limited space, and you can imagine trying to take 20-foot out with a dam, three-to-one slopes on each side, you end up 60-foot and you get 120-foot of dam. So the, the walls made a much better use of the property. So we've added walls around both BMPs, and in accordance with the LDO, it is a minor modification, walls are allowed if you use, encouraged to use a split-face block wall, which we are proposing and is shown in exhibit N in the handout that you just got, which is the back page. Those, those are pictures from the site just north of us, the east-west property, which that wall is located along this line here. And then there's also the Glencroft Town Homes, which is the south, the site that's under construction here. The second picture is a, basically the same type material wall, the colors are slightly different, but that is the look of the wall that we will be using on our project as well. We have chosen, due to the extensive heights of these walls, they're as much as 20 feet, or 21 feet, I guess, we're breaking the walls up with three-foot terraces for plant strips in between, and you can see those in your handout, exhibit L on the second page. The first page shows the cross-section in plan view, and the second page does show kind of the view from Cary Glen Parkway. I wish, at this scale, it better illustrated, but at 30 scale, or, excuse me, 20 scale, the, I, I put the cars in there for perspective so that you can kind of get an idea on how big a, a standard car is with perspective of this. We do have quite a bit of, of landscaping on the slope above the pond to help screen the views, and then we've also, you see the tiered walls with draping plants and shrubs lining the walls and softening those edges. The, I don't have a cut section of the second BMP because those walls are all less than six feet in height, and according to the LDO, that's, that's kind of what they, the target height amount was, if it's allowed, and they are much less visible to the public because they're isolated from the site and completely screened.
And the work product that we see here as our proposed exhibit L in two parts is your work product, is that correct?
That is correct. Willie Hood provided the, the colored landscaping plan, it's on the cover.
And Mr. Hood will testify shortly. In the south, in the southwest corner, those, that vegetation is going to remain undisturbed, isn't that correct?
That is correct. There is a, the head of a buffer that comes into the property here, so there's a large area of undisturbed, currently wooded area.
Okay. And now, to take us in a northerly direction along Cary Glen Boulevard, the, the PDD does not require any vegetation to be planted along Cary Glen Boulevard, is that correct?
Well, there are no street yard standards set in the PDD along Cary Glen Boulevard.
But we are going ahead and committing for plantings as indicated, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, if you'll step down, please, I'm going to call Mr. Willie Hood up, please. Mr. Willie Hood?
Yes.
Would you please identify yourself and your background, because I'm going to tender you also as an expert?
Okay. My name is Willie Hood. I'm with Jerry Turner and Associates and have been since 1976. I've been a registered landscape architect in the state since 1978 and have a bachelor degree in landscape architecture from NC State University. And the, I'm primarily responsible for land planning, landscape plans, and similar projects.
And you are the executive vice president of Jerry Turner and Associates?
That's correct.
I know you didn't want to say that, but I did. Would you please, we've heard from Mr. Callahan how you and he collaborated in approaching that BMP, and, but I want to hear some additional specificity from you as to the plantings. Of course, I think you've got a particular type of planting that is to drape, as he's indicated in this exhibit.
That's correct. We, we're using several shrubs, some of them are native and some of them are, are not, some are evergreen and some are deciduous, and some are also draping kind of quality like a Carolina jasmine. But we're using butterfly bush, inkberry, wax myrtle, red osier dogwood, galardia, inkberry holly, pink muli grass, dwarf fountain grass, and viburnums. So we're using a nice mixture of native materials that'll be sensitive to that type of environment. And then to, to screen or provide separation from the BMP to the street, we're using shade trees in that, in that street scape at, at least one per 40 feet, we exceed that. That would be a normal standard if, if it had, if it would have had a standard. But we're also introducing under-story evergreen trees so that that'll help block the view to the BMP. And we're using red cedars and magnolias. Our, our, our large trees are red maple and tulip poplar and bald cypress also that's, that fits that setting.
Okay, would you go ahead and take us up Cary Glen Boulevard and then along the east-west line and down where the power facility is, and then along our south line, which is adjacent to the evolving forever home project? And I'm particularly interested in the, the type A buffer that is in prospect both northeast and south.
That's correct. We are proposing a type A, a 30-foot type A buffer. The PDD document said that it would be undisturbed, but if, if it's disturbed, which it was allowed to be disturbed with grading, then it would be planted back at a C, a type C buffer. We, so we have upgraded that from a type C buffer to a type A buffer in the areas where we are, are having to remove trees. And we feel that this is, is far superior to the PDD requirements because a lot of the vegeta, the existing vegetation in there was somewhat spindly, and there was not much in the under-story that would block your views, you know? A lot of times you have spindly trees. So we feel this is superior. And we, we did this along the north, then coming along the east and around the BMP and along the south also. Then we get, at the south, we get into a larger area of undisturbed trees where we would supplement, if they do not meet the opaque standards, we would still add trees in those, or shrubs in those areas.
Our exhibit N, our last exhibit you have seen, those are the retaining walls along our north and our south lines. Are you of the opinion that the plantings that you have devised, suggested, and our clients agreed to, will be a significant complement to those otherwise rather stark walls as far as our residents are concerned?
Yes, as far as our residents are concerned, we were very, we were very concerned about what that would look like, and that also led us to want to do the type A opaque buffer to help screen those walls. You can, you can see there's some, been some initial planting, but they're very small along that wall, so it needs some help. We provide, we're going to provide it.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hood. Okay, moving on to minor modification D, the request to eliminate both vehicular and pedestrian connectivity to the east, I would request that, Ms. Callahan, come back to the lectern, please. Would you please indicate what led in the development of this plan you to suggest to the client and with the staff, interaction with the staff, that we not have a vehicular interaction to our east?
Certainly. As staff has already mentioned in their report, the property directly east is a power substation, and then just beyond that is 540. The redevelopment potential of that property is probably slim, and provided pedestrian and vehicular connection to that point did not seem to be needed. There is additionally, with all the grade change across our site, and in keeping with being able to navigate the site with handicap access and also reasonable parking lot and drive grade percentages, there is quite a bit of grade difference on the Progress Energy or CPNL property, and I've demonstrated that in exhibit M, which is part of your handout. You'll see on page one of two is the section view where we took a section of that, and then on page two of two, again, you can kind of see the grade differences, as much as 14 feet to the property line from our driveway in a, in a very short span. That would require about a 35% grade connection if we were to connect a driveway to that property, and a typical driveway connection maximum is about 10 to 12%. And that would be without parking, with parking would be 5%.
And these, this exhibit M in two parts is your work product?
It is.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And just to legitimize our last one there, N, I didn't, did you take the photos of the retaining wall that we looked at with Mr. Hood?
I did.
And when did you do that?
Yesterday.
Okay, so those are your product. Moving to the last number E, minor modification, the request to eliminate sidewalk on the eastern side of the private street running north and south. Would you please indicate to the mayor and council the background of that request?
Okay. I think staff touched on that eloquently already. The requirement for private streets is to have sidewalks on both sides, which we have provided in the north-south direction and then through the main corridor. Once it turns here, we felt there was no need for pedestrians to cross the street to come down, as of, there's, there's nothing more to access on the east side of the site. Additionally, we, we added that sidewalk back at the south so that we're in line with the private drive connection to our southern property line. We pick up both of those sidewalks and then transition them back over to the west side of the street where there would be ample cross-access for a pedestrian. We do feel that if we provide a easy access to our dumpster area, that the residents of off-site property would be encouraged to use our dumpsters, which, then we'd be accounting for their trash as well. So we would like to not make that as convenient. And also it preserves a little more the, the landscaping and buffering of the BMP in that area.
And our refuse will be privately serviced, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any other aspects in your professional opinion that apply to this request for this modification, number E?
No.
Okay. Okay, let me, if you'll stay with me for just a moment, please. I'd like to circle back to the development plan criteria, and of course, we've got six criteria. You've already testified that, in your opinion, subject to the approval with the minor modifications, that the plan complies with all applicable requirements of the LDO, including the development and design standards of chapters seven and eight, as well as the dedication and improvements provisions of, of chapter eight, as, as well as all applicable town specifications. That is correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Yes, do you have an opinion as to the plan adequately protecting other property from potential adverse effects of the proposed development?
Yes, I, I think it does adequately protect the adjacent properties. As we've already covered, the landscaping buffer that surrounds three sides of the property has been upgraded to a type A opaque buffer, which would be more than the existing vegetation, as well as more than what would be required under the PDD regulations. We are also consistent with the, you know, residential uses to our south and west.
Speaking of the west, on the other side of Cary Glen Boulevard, that is an apartment project, is it not?
That is correct.
Do they have any street trees at all?
Very limited street scape.
Okay, so is in your professional opinion that we're enhancing perhaps their visual experience also?
That is correct.
Okay. Are you of the opinion that the plan provides harmony and unity with the development of nearby properties?
Yes, I am, as stated in the staff report. We did give careful consideration to the driveway location, and then we do have town home properties to our south. There's the office and veterinarian building to our north, which we provided adequate screening, is kind of a transition between us and the town homes to the south, and then directly across the street is another garden-style apartment project with four stories directly facing the road. So we're very complimentary to the surrounding developments.
In connection with our four-story and five-story elevations, which, with Mr. Grattis's assistance, we put on the screen there, do you have any additional comments about the, the color palette, the materials? Do you have anything you'd like to share for illustrative purposes?
Sure.
With the mayor and council as to what's in prospect?
We do have a materials board and brought some samples tonight, just in case you're interested. This is a sample, this is a sample of the metal roof that will be as an accent on several of the peaks. You can see in that elevation that's on the screen now. Then we have several samples of the hardy plank siding, the different colors that will be used, as well as the shingles. And we do have the stone as well. Right. Came a little unglued in shipping. This is the, the stone product that would be along the foundations, and it's also mixed up with a similar. up with a similar, same type stone, but in a flag, flagstone-type look in addition to to break up the patterns.
Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our presentation. I'd like to offer into evidence our exhibits as indicated. Of course, Exhibits A, B, C, and D that are in your materials, plus the staff report itself, which was very comprehensive, offering those into evidence. And then our Exhibits F through N, we offer into evidence also. As you can see, our Exhibits G, H, I, and J replicate parts of our 57-page site plan, but we wanted those to be available specifically if you all had questions about the palette to the, the other aspects of the, of the project, proposed project. So that's, that concludes our presentation at this stage. We'll be more than happy to answer every question to the best of our ability.
Thank you. This time we'll call on other speakers who have been sworn in and wish speak in support of the application to approach the podium one at a time. Other speakers. Seeing no one, I'll invite cross-examination of witnesses who testified in support of their requests. Seeing no one, we'll now open the hearing to those who are opposed to the request. I'll invite the first speaker forward at this time. Seeing no one, I'll call on the town staff to add any testimony.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to remind council that there are five modifications before them this evening. Modification A would be for a payment in lieu for a traffic signal. The requirement is that the applicant install traffic mitigations. The applicant has requested to provide a payment in lieu towards signalization of the Cary Glen and Carpenter Fire Station Road intersection. Three adjacent properties have already contributed their portion. This is the fourth and final portion to allow signalization to occur. Modification B is a parking reduction the applicant is required to provide, parking as prescribed by the LDO. The applicant has instead chosen to want to provide a reduction of five, or excuse me, nine and a half percent parking. Staff's observation are that parking reductions do result in less imperious footprint and a reduced stormwater treatment volume. However, less parking may also present operational issues, especially for guests. The amount of parking that is being reduced on this site is approximately equivalent to the guest parking that would normally be required under the LDO. Modification C would be regarding retaining walls and stormwater devices. In this particular instance, the planning director, if this were a staff approval plan, would be able to entertain an applicant providing retaining walls because this is in a mixed-use center. However, those requirements would permit those retaining wall sections to be no greater than six feet in height. The applicant is requesting to provide a retaining wall that is higher than six feet in the first BMP, which is the one closest to the road. Staff's observations are that the wall locations are either screened vegetation or will have a limited visibility. And the LDO, as mentioned before, does permit retaining walls within mixed-use centers. Modification D would be for connectivity to the eastern property. Applicants are required to provide connections to the north, south, east, and west. In this particular instance, the applicant is requesting to not provide connectivity to the east. Staff's observations are that access to that site is restricted, given that it is a Duke Energy Substation and redevelopment is unlikely. Modification E, the fifth of all modifications, is to provide sidewalks along both sides of vehicular travelways within mixed-use centers. This property is within a mixed-use center, but the applicant has requested to not provide sidewalk along the eastern side of the main north-south travelway. Staff's observations are that without a connection to the east, a sidewalk along that eastern side of the north-south street would have limited use. At this point, the staff would end their presentation and would be more than happy to answer any questions from council.
Thank you. This time we'll invite cross-examination of staff's testimony.
Cross-examination, sir.
Okay. Now we'll invite anyone that's been sworn in if they have any objections to the competency of any evidence or testimony. Seeing no one, does any party believe that evidence has been presented tonight that warrants a continuance of this hearing? I see no one, so we'll open the deliberative phase of the hearing, open it up to council members for comments or questions. Seeing none, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask Mr. Grattis to help us with motions necessary at this time, council, if they're willing to make motions.
Yes, of course. Typically with these situations, council would be asked to make two separate motions. The first would be for modification requests. There are five before us this evening. And the second would be to approve the site plan. I'd also like to note that staff has provided suggested motions for both. And please note that under suggestions, motions for site plan, there are several conditions that we would like council to consider.
Okay.
Made it easy for us. I'll make a motion that we approve all modification requests for the reasons that we've obviously heard and minimally discussed. I mean that we approve the modification request made by the applicant as a request meet all the approval criteria of the applicable sections of the LDO.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion?
First, can you put the previous slide up?
Yes. This slide?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, for discussion, the question I have is the fact that the other three sides provided for the traffic signal, but they're asking for a waiver.
No, they're doing the fourth payment.
They're doing the same as the other.
They're doing the same as the other three.
Now I understand why you were all so agreeable.
Yeah.
So now all money, they can do a lot.
Yeah, I wanted to make sure that the money was collected.
It's all fair.
Other questions, comments? Okay, we have a motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Bush?
And a second motion to approve the site plan and for the reasons we've discussed. I mean that we approve the proposed site plan with the conditions as stated below, as it meets all the approval criteria set forth in Section 3.9.2I of the LDO. This approval is conditioned upon the following, that the applicant must satisfactorily address all remaining development review committee comments on the master plan submitted for signature, and that the payment in lieu of $73,333.33 must be made prior to the signing of the final my団s by staff.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second discussion?
I guess I'd just like to say very briefly that I'm really glad that they screened the retaining wall, that they broke the retaining wall up into terrorist areas and then screened it. I think that's really nice, and I'd like to see more applicants go forward and do something like that.
I'm looking forward to the signal. Thanks for coming, that final one coming in.
I'd just like to say in clarification, in case some people watching this are getting confused, we are not approving 197 apartments tonight. We're approving a site plan for 197 apartments, actually 235, I guess at one point, that was approved back in...
2006.
2006.
Yeah.
Eight years ago.
Right.
So...
Just a site plan.
Just so we, we understand that. Is that, Mr. Grattis is confused? Did I say something?
I was not here six years ago, so I want to confirm with staff. It sounds like, yes, this site plan at one time was approved.
No, not the site plan.
The rezoning.
The rezoning. I apologize. The rezoning was approved.
Right.
So we're doing the site plan tonight. We're not starting from zero and approving 197 more dwellings.
Correct. In fact, the applicant is, is taking advantage of fewer units than he was entitled to from the zoning.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Silverstein, if everything's in order, I'll close the public hearing.
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
There's a motion and a second discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Visit the Town of KIRI website at townofkirii.org.